I call to order the Osage County Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 8th, 2025.
Stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, we have Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Cooter, and Clerk Michelle Morris. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? So, we're removing the Lloyd group?
So, we are removing the Lloyd group. He is available by phone if we need him. I just kind of made an executive decision on that. There was no real change from last week in getting some research done. We spent about an hour or so last night on the phone trying to go through things and I answered some questions but needed to dig into a few other questions.
Department heads being engaged?
A few. So, I have sent those back to get those numbers redone. What else? If they're just, I mean, unless you wanted me to come here and just repeat what you repeated last week, which is silly, there wasn't a lot of point. I do have some extra information that I can share today that we kind of figured to try to decide whether we want to exceed or whether we don't. So, we can move forward with that. The emergency vehicle permit, I need to do some more checking on that, so I need to remove that.
You said there was a PBC?
I need to add PVC. I received a bill yesterday, so we should get that taken care of.
Will we have a quorum here for that?
I did ask Fred Dyer to attend. I'm not sure whether he's going to or not, but Chris is going to be able to attend, so we should be fine. I also got notice from Fire District number five wanting to fill a vacant position. I believe that is it.
I was going to add one item, and I don't know, the individual might have reached out to the other commissioners, but I had someone call me who has a question about while we're suspending the NRP, there's someone who's literally ready to start building, but they know that one of the qualifications is you can't start. So, like, their loan has just started, their builder's ready to go, but then they learned we suspended the program. And so, I said, "That's just a discussion I'd have to bring to the commission." Because we got July, we've got about maybe a month or month and a half, I think, until whatever the edits are that we're going to be looking at. So, I said, "I'll just, I said, "I can discuss it at the commission meeting, but other than that, I can't, I can't give any advice." Because she's like, "Well, can I, can we pour concrete? Can we?" And I said, "I can't give any advice on that." So, if we could add that, and we may need to call Les just to get an idea of, are we wanting to try to come up with something for that time period? Because there may be some people calling that. So, I'd like to add that.
Heather, I have one additional item as well.
Okay. Is it new business or?
New business, a request from the City of Carbondale for a letter of support.
Okay. I think. Okay.
Heather, do you think we'll need anybody like Trish or?
Yes, and I meant to, I was gonna, yesterday when I was doing my phone calls, and I meant to text Tricia and actually, and I don't think, I don't know if I have Michelle Rook's number, but I meant to text them and ask them if they would be available.
Because I would hate to say something and then it would not comply with whatever they were.
Well, I think we at least need to start the discussion. I don't know if we'll be able to make a decision, but this lady literally is just like, they just started their loan, and you know, that's, when that starts ticking, that starts occurring interest on a building loan and stuff, so just one of those things that pop up. Okay. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
As amended, yes, so moved.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anyone, public comments, public hearing, any correspondence to commission? I think you already handed those out.
Yep, those aren't there for you?
That, this thing here?
Yep.
Okay, no unfinished business? Okay, new business? Is Chris coming up for the payroll change, or do you just have his?
I do have it, but he is also going to come up with a KPNF, and we do need to wait for Josh for that.
Is there another presentation on that or?
No, it's continuously not presented, so we just need some direction from Josh. Ryan's supposed to come up for bids.
Okay.
I do have them.
Is there a time on the, where he's opening the bids? Is that what he's doing?
No, they've already been opened. He's got his recommendation.
Oh, okay.
It's April 20th. Let me check.
Thank you.
Okay, he's supposed to come up on that.
Okay, we'll just wait till he.
This is the old copy I have of that, but that's that.
I'm going to move to the item with the Fire District number five. We have a letter here.
So, this would be the first one of these I've been involved with, this is just what the commissioners?
I believe, it's just part of the process that they send their recommendations. It's kind of like the townships, I guess.
Like the townships, yeah.
Where they send their recommendations and then it comes through us.
Gotcha.
Do you have any?
I have no problem with that.
Questions on that? Okay. So, it's from, "To the Osage County Board of Commissioners from Fire District number five, they're recommending Tom Lewis of Linden, Kansas, to fill the vacant position as of June 9th, 2025, due to another member moving out of state."
All right. We need a motion to accept that, is it? So moved.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, I'm going to give you that back.
And we'll leave the bottom side.
The bottom side. I would just.
Just our signature, Michelle?
Just one?
Just one signature, or you want?
Go ahead.
All right. Colleen, would you like to come forward with your request for letter of support for Carbondale?
I'm here on behalf of the City of Carbondale, who is pursuing a CDVG grant for their city park. As a community, they've raised 153,000 in match funds, and they are asking for a letter of support from the Board of Commission. And Les has actually provided, he was gracious enough to provide his electronic signature if you folks are agreeable. And I am sorry for the impromptu, we just found out that this letter is needed on the heading of the next week versus August, which was originally communicated to us, so I'm super excited for what the community's pulling together up there, so.
And this request is just for Chairman Holman to sign, to sign, and so I think we only need one signature.
And then he, that's just his?
Yes, yes. I did send this to, I did send this to Josh, and of course, you know, I'm sure, I mean, I just sent it to him last night, but what I will share with you is that this is drafted off of a letter that we previously provided to Scranton, which he's, which he approved, so I feel very confident he'll be fine with this, so.
Yeah, it doesn't voice any financial or, I mean, it's not like we're committing to anything other than saying where he works.
Exactly, exactly.
Lots of these grants just need multiple letters of support from entities that.
Indeed, yeah.
Are applicable, so.
Yeah, I don't see anything wrong with it, so.
Okay. Well, I would move to approve the signature, the electronic signature of Chairman Holman on the letter of support for the CDVG grant for the Carbondale, City of Carbondale Park Improvement, CDVG grant application.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Motion passes. So, I'm going to give you this.
I'll give you a copy of the final.
Do you want that?
With his signature. Yeah, we'll have to take that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have one other question. I know that Josh is going to be joining us shortly, so I have two priority projects for him, one being the review of the Safe Streets For All documents that we received, and then also the Kansas Transit Tax, which we want to try to implement. I guess I'm just seeking direction on how to raise that with his priority list, because I know he's handling this so much, and I think that direction is going to have to come from the Board of Commission. So, if you have any, I sent emails last night and hope to catch him in the hallway here.
On both those items, is it mainly just, you're needing his review of the documents and the okay from him that they're appropriate, or is there an action item?
The Safe Streets For All Grant Agreement is simply a quick review, and if he's good with it, we can just proceed. They're very standard for the federal government. For the Kansas Transit Tax, we actually need to draft up a resolution so that I can bring it to you folks, and I've provided him with two other county resolutions from surrounding counties, so I'll follow up with him that it might need some help from you folks to help prioritize his projects. I'll be happy to let you know.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Can we see if Tricia is available and Michelle? I can run over this.
Do you guys want me to run?
I'm gonna, I'll just see.
If you are, Tricia.
Yes, if I should have a little.
Okay. Colleen? And I guess, can we see if Les is available by phone? I don't know if I have that.
Hi.
You're correct on the person that called me, so I think one of you might have referred them out, but I was telling him, so I had had a call, and maybe you can give a little more insight to it too, but we basically had an individual excluding this information that called me and just asked about, they're ready to build, they have their loan, their loan started, they told the builder to kind of go ahead, and then they learned our program was suspended, so they said, "What's their options?" And I said, "I would just, that'd have to be a discussion for the commission." So, I don't know if you have any additional information?
So, that particular one came into my office yesterday.
Okay, go ahead. Can you hear us? Yeah, can you hear us, Les?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This person might have also reached out to you, but we had an individual that had called me, and basically, they're ready to build their house, they've got their loan that's already started, they told their builder to get, to get going, but then learned our NRP program was suspended, so wanting to know how that, you know, what options they have to be in the program, and I just told them that that would have to be a discussion for the commission. So, Tricia's here and Michelle's here, so it's just kind of a, just a discussion on how do we want to handle people that maybe are caught in the middle while, while this is suspended temporarily? So, Tricia's going to give us a little bit more information.
Yes, ma'am.
So, this couple came into my office yesterday wanting to do a building permit for their residence and the NRP. Kena and I had spoke about them the week prior, because we're going through the county on basically illegal wastewater systems, and this couple intends to use the wastewater system that they currently have, that they installed in 2021, and it is not appropriate. It doesn't meet the standards of the county or the state. So, I had them do a wastewater inspection, and they will end up having to do a new soil profile, which Kena's four to six weeks out after all that we've had. So, that's four to six weeks from now that they would be able to install their wastewater system. So, by the time that they would need to be ready to actually build, the NRP program should be, you know.
Okay, so in this case, it might not be applicable to them. So, if we had any others that came in, we're looking at what, four weeks, maybe six weeks? I couldn't, I didn't remember the timeframe you guys had given.
Yep, August 26th.
So, about six weeks? Okay.
I've had, one other one came in yesterday for their wastewater soil profile and same thing. I'm basically instructing the ones that feel like they want to do it, we have had some, but it doesn't matter to them, because they're planning on building regardless. And the rest of them have been, okay, well, we were, they won't be able to do anything until then. I told them it is fine, they're having, they're work done, they're set again, they can have a foundation, basically, it's the plan.
So, then would they come back? Oh, go ahead.
So, my question would be, Tricia, is the application going to be any different for the new program, or were we mainly just working on the, I think it was like, the percentage of value increase and things like that? Was the application itself going to be any different?
I was looking at different applications. Ours has been changed a few times, but there's just, there's information that is missing, and I think there's some areas where there needs to be clarification, and then also putting in a disclaimer that they understand, that they have to, you know, that they'll have to check and sign, that they understand that, you know, the different rules, and I would like to list out the rules. So, one of the things Heather requested was that they would have to mark off, that they understand that they have to pay their taxes, and then mark off, that they understand that they have to, you know, follow the different rules and guidelines and contact once they are done.
The reason I ask that is because in the interim, while we're getting them squared away, and it sounds like the one question isn't going to be ready until our NRP treaty anyway, so that one may hash itself out, but is it something that we can have someone provide some information and a request, and then they come back when our NRP is finalized, and then they can fill out the proper application? That way, they know that they were trying to get into the, you know, into the NRP before we were complete, you know what I'm saying?
I do, and I have been keeping them separated. And the other thing that I have done, well, for quite some time, is I went back to the way that Becky was doing the permitting, so instead of getting your wastewater and building permit at the same time generally, you get your wastewater, and then once that is finished, then you get your building permit.
Right.
And I did that mainly because of the NRP, because it is, we'll see, it's out, and if they're building it themselves, that four to six weeks can make a difference.
I agree.
So, I've been, I've been keeping, like, they're all separated, so that way I know who, you know, will need, and have the information.
So, essentially, we have the means where we can take these people's information, issue the wastewater permit, they'll have something that they have to do four to six weeks before they're even ready for the NRP application, correct?
Correct. Because it'll end four to six weeks, not just the NRP, but even their building permit.
Right, right. Yeah, because there's a little time there, but we have review, and then obviously Kena's inspection, and they have to complete the necessary lagoon or step ditch.
Yes.
For their support, and he does any will. So, I mean, it sounds to me like you kind of got a handle on it, and this may just shake itself out on its own.
Yeah.
And we could just let people know that we are, it wouldn't have to come in, we're taking their information, and here's the process, and then we should have it, because you guys said around August anyway, that's only a month off, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so in this case.
But you guys in any kind of a bad situation here?
No.
Does Josh have any issues with that?
He's not here yet.
Oh.
He said he should be here close to 10:00.
Okay, well, you might just double check with him and make sure, but it sounds to me like most of these, given a timeline, will probably work themselves out.
Well, and that's the thing, so we have two that we put in, or that had applied right before this, and so they'll be open with the 22, with the original group, but we haven't had any that are ready for the next one.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Hey, Les, while you're on the phone, while you're on the phone, can we do payroll?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Can I pull this up here right quick?
Is this 712 number the total?
Correct, yep. It says total payroll expense is.
Did you have any questions?
I don't think so.
I did not, but they're, they look pretty standard.
The total payroll expense being 712?
Yes.
Is that what? Okay. That's the line I'm looking at for the total? Total means total?
So, I would need a motion to approve.
Correct, yep. It says total payroll expense is 712.
Did you have any questions?
I don't think so.
I did not, but they're, they look pretty standard.
The total payroll expense being 712?
Yes.
Is that what, okay. That's the line I'm looking at for the total. Total means total.
So I would need a motion to approve the July 5th, 2025 payroll on the amount of $712,685.19.
So moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, aye. Motion passes, okay. That.
Anything else? I've got a few more minutes. I really apologize for not being there, guys, I've got, I'm just stuck on this federal job and they don't let me leave, so. Um, but I've got a little time, so if there's something else, bills or anything.
Well, we have the PVC and Fred just got here, so if you want to do the PVC.
Okay.
Okay. Um, what, do we have a PVC document?
Yes.
Did you already give it to us?
No.
Coming up.
All right.
You get any rain in your country?
PVC.
No.
Invoice from Goldberg.
Yeah, I'll let you or Fred, I'll, I'll recess the meeting and then you or Fred can do the PVC.
Okay, go ahead and have Fred call towards since he's, uh, present.
All right, so I, I recessed, I recessed the Osage County Commission meeting.
Okay, uh, I, uh, move to open the PVC meeting to play this final bit.
Uh, it may not be final.
Yeah.
I'm hoping.
We're still thinking.
Um, I'll second the motion to open.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, okay. Have you seen that?
I haven't.
We, we haven't yet, we just.
Okay.
It's all downhill to the south. Watching the hay get cut and baled.
Yeah.
Depends if you want to gamble and believe the meteorologist or not, and how much you want to cut down.
Yeah, right.
How much you windrove.
Yeah, of course.
Doing those sections at a time, I just.
Okay. Looks like we, uh, I move if we pay the KBS bill in the amount of $102,173.69. Just a second.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries, bill be paid.
Awesome.
Okay, now recess the PVC meeting unless you.
Or do I close it?
Close, close the PVC meeting.
I'll second the motion, make sure.
All right.
Thanks Fred.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I open the Osage County Commission meeting. Do you want me to sign this or hold it?
Go ahead.
Do you want her, do you want me to sign this PVC document or do you want her to use your stamp?
Uh, you can sign it, yeah. And then I will move that we pay the PVC bill presented to us, uh, from the Goldberg Group Architects in the amount of $102,173.69.
Second that.
He seconded it.
If motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Okay. All right. Really, we're just waiting on Chris and Ryan Fine right now, so I don't really have anything else.
Okay, and I talked to Ryan about his bid, I am fine with the bid. I kind of asked him the same questions I think you guys will ask. There's a little difference in him, um, when you get him opened up, but, um, I'm fine with both and I'm fine with his recommendation, so just so you guys are aware of that. And then, um, on the budget stuff, I would be available. If you guys wanted to do some budget stuff like the hearing and things like that in an evening, if you wanted to have a special meeting, or if we need to do it during the day, just let me know. And so I'll make arrangements. I'll be on this job for a little while, and so maybe tied up next week as well, but I will keep you guys in the loop.
Okay, yeah, we just removed it for today.
Need more information.
Michelle said there was just, there were other things she was still finishing up and so we just, we just took Scott Lloyd off for today, so.
Okay, very good.
I do.
All right, well, thank you guys.
Hold on just a second.
I, I just received an email from Civic Plus. Um, I've been working with them on, um, trying to figure out how we kind of re, want to revamp our website. I know we've talked about this for about the last year. Um, we, there's three different plans, um, and going through some other counties that have Civic Plus and kind of picking out the ones that I thought would be, um, beneficial to our county and more user friendly for not only us, but the public. Thank you. Uh, would be the ultimate plan, which is the top plan. We currently have the lowest, um, plan right now. Uh, it does need to be renewed, um, regardless what we do. Um, it's, the bill to renew right now is $8,886.50. Let's see, on our.
I have a quick question on that.
Sure.
Is there a way for them, whether they're in person or we do something online, that they could show us the additional features as we move to different packages? Mainly because some of the departments that want to utilize their webpage more might be interested in what's available and that might help us know for sure what extra features we need.
Yeah, I agree with that, I'd like to see kind of, and even if they have some ideas, you know, they'll have some, uh, other examples and whatnot for us to look at, I think.
Yeah, so when we moved to this one, we really liked it. We started with the lowest package just to get moved, but we always wanted to go to a higher one with more features. Um, and there are a couple of counties that currently have it that have a nicer one in it. Their website's really nice.
Sure, always the ultimate as well.
Yes.
I did not see a lot with the second one, uh, um, really, I think we should really, not only do I want people to be more involved and be able to handle their own, um, websites, as long as we're not going to have somebody in-house that takes care of this, it's going to have to be user friendly. Um, I think that ours right now is a little pretty redundant on how things are laid out. And but on this one, it would give us, um, the training. They would, we would provide the information in order for them to design the plan, which they say takes around six to eight months to get the entire website up and ready as long as we quickly produce the information they need. It's is a 48-month redesign ultimate annual municipal website central, audio I manage. It will meet all of the ADA standards that are required. Um, we're struggling in that aspect a little bit to have all that compliant. It would see what else. The implementation was a little over 13,000 to get it all redone. Total investment per rated the first year of $19,526.20 and annual recurring services would be $8,886.50. So really, we're paying for the implementation. If we can, I'm going to pass that down to you. Brandon, that's the draft, um. I just did one copy of these, um, since they were kind of lengthy, that you could, could look through them. It kind of shows, um, the history of it, how they can lay them out, um, how the dashboards, the history log and.
Oh, they're out of Manhattan.
Level permissions, um.
I would love, I mean, I'm all for this, I'd love if we can have a presentation and see what's, what all it involves and, okay? And then, um.
I, yeah, I, I agree with that. I think they should be able to come over and kind of show us the flow and, and things like that, some of the new, you know, the new stuff. So yeah, if you would get them on the agenda, I think that'd be great.
Okay, um, is there anything that we should be, um, thinking about as far as, obviously, if we move forward, the redesign fee would be paid here fairly soon as far as we're looking at our budget and stuff going forward. I don't see a lot of, um, you know, extra costs per se, it's just the, the setup.
Yeah, I think the first step, obviously, you know, we have the pricing. If we could get them in there to give us a little, uh, uh, run-through, a little presentation, um, and then we can decide there. We'll have to definitely look into the budget, different lines, and just make sure we've got it there. But it doesn't, how much is the cost difference once it's set up? What would be the ongoing cost? Is it 2,000 or is it 8,000 or, you know what I mean?
It says on here year one, annual fee discounted, um. Total investment per rated year one, $19,526.20 annual re- reoccurring services, $8,886.50.
So that's not much different than what we're paying now? It's just going to be mainly the initial cost to get it up and going?
Right.
Okay.
Of course, there's always little things that you can add. Um, they had what's called a chatbot and I told them that I didn't think we were really interested in that at this point. And he agreed that, um, right now it's probably not something that's beneficial to us until we really get things, you know, going and on, on the site.
Yeah, I think we would be able to find that startup cost and capital improvements and, uh, one of those funds like that, so I'm not terribly concerned. I think we get them, get them here, get a presentation, I think, I agree with Heather, I think that'd be it.
Yeah, well, yeah, and my other question is, how, in that annual fee, does it, does that include any like tech support? Like if there is someone who's adding something to their webpage, is there a person who just calls in or, you know, email and just say, look, I need this added? Because if there's a good customer tech support, that would be great too, if that comes with part of that upper level package.
Yeah.
We have three hours of training for up to 12 attendees included in this redesign amount. I have noticed on the current one that we have, they do have a lot of videos that, you know, pre-recorded videos that you can go through and learn how to do things. So that makes it.
Yeah, I think it's three hours of training. We could involve a department head, a outreach department or whatnot and get them. That's pretty good.
But they were just looking at a decision by the end of the month. So I was looking at either the 22nd or the 29th.
Yeah, just have them set up a, uh, whatever presentation they have, have it with a zoom and that way, if for some reason I can't be in person, I can click on and view.
Okay.
Anywhere, yeah.
Okay, and I'll send you the rest of the packets that he had included. I will send them in, an email to you guys so you can review them. That is all I have on that right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to, uh, Sheriff Wells, uh, Josh will be here close to 10:00.
He just texted, he's not coming. He said he's sick. Literally, I just got it. I was messaging him for something else.
Well.
He said he's available by phone.
Let's, uh, go ahead and try to call him and just discuss the KPNF. If that works for you guys.
Let me see if I can.
Well, is this in regard to the, the case?
Hey, are you available for a few minutes? We have Chris here.
The KPNF.
Okay, just a moment, I'm going to put you on speakerphone.
Oh, the KPNF, yeah. Oh, the resolution for that, yeah.
Okay, so I've got Josh on speakerphone on my phone.
I forgot it.
I'm not sure if you'll hear him or not. But here we go. Josh, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay. Chris, you're up. This is with the KPNF documentation.
Yeah, I think it just needs a resolution number. I think that's all we're waiting on.
And then do we need some direction on how to fill out the rest of paperwork though? I'd send that whole packet to Josh.
Josh, did you get the packet for KPNF?
Uh, I don't know, no, no.
Do you want me to resend it to you so it's at the top?
Um, Wednesday, Michelle, you sent me something.
Um, sounds possibly right.
Okay, affiliation application.
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what you had on?
Yes.
Yes, that's, that's it.
What do you need from me when I ask this a question?
Um, we're going to need a resolution. And then just for you to review the rest of the documentation, see if you have any questions or concerns about anything that's in it.
Well, there's an application for transfer, which is, just needs to be notarized. What, he just want a resolution saying that we authorize this is applying?
It would be the.
Is it going to share its department? Okay. So there's an application to transfer for capers to KPF? And that's.
And that's a resolution form on page thirteen. And then what about the optional group life insurance?
Yes, that's included, I think.
What, okay. So those are both resolutions. So I would just move to adopt. Uh, Michelle, can you just? It looks like they're charter resolutions.
Let me pull it up here.
It's weird. Sorry, give me just a second.
Hello, Josh, just to give you a little backstory. Uh, last week we approved to move forward with the application and to fill it out. But I wanted them to send it over to you, uh, for review. And I thought we would probably need a resolution, um, from us stating that we are offering the KPNF to the Sheriff's Department deputies as a county.
Well, that's what, but they are, they, so it's included template resolution in the packet. They have application as a resolution. They've got it styled as a charter resolution. Which I guess is fine. It's all three of you are on board. And then you get, you have a protest period of sixty days. And then you have to, after sixty days, if a if a protest hasn't been filed, then I just don't understand whether styling it as a as a, uh, charter resolution.
Great.
Um, well, anyway, anyways, uh, I would just approve the resolutions. Put, put a resolution number on page thirteen. It says resolution number. And then move to approve the application for transfer papers to KPNF resolution. And then to a separate motion for, uh, and a separate resolution number for affiliation for optional group life insurance. Which is on page fifteen.
Good.
And it looks like these supposed to be in is only the odd pages. That must have been from back. So.
Let me send you this again.
I mean, that, it looks like it's a complete resolution on page thirteen.
Well, if that, if, if all that, the template and everything looks good to you, then, uh, we just need a resolution number to add to the motion that was made last week.
Right. So just, just, uh, add a resolution on page thirteen. And then add a resolution to page fifteen. And then make two separate motions to pass those resolutions. Good. Does that make sense, Michelle?
Yes.
Hello?
Someone's gonna have to make all the
Yes, that makes sense.
Okay.
So, right, it cut out what? Does that make sense, Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I would just use those since they're, they're forms and they're already styled as resolutions. I don't think we need to retype them since they're what language they want. Very good. All right. Now I'll leave it on my phone. Sorry about my late, great and unpleasantness here.
Um, do you guys want to start discussing the, uh, budget since we have you on the phone, Josh?
Uh, it's, I can't hear. Michelle, can you speak louder or closer?
Do you want to speak about the budget since you're on the phone now and we have Les as well?
Uh, you mean as far as R and R?
Yes.
Uh, I can, um, the way I understood it from Michelle was that we're approaching the June, July twentieth deadline, which this year is July eighteenth.
Correct.
Friday. Um, Jefferson County's doing its, um, R, uh, notice to exceed R and R rate if they're going to do it next week on the fourteenth. Their Monday meeting. So you technically have until next Tuesday as far as regular meetings to make a decision. But I just, I didn't know what was incomplete based on what Michelle was explaining as far as the budget. And if you're going to, because, and the other thing is just if you give notice to intent, a notice of intent to exceed R and R, you don't have to follow through with that. It just preserves your option. So, um, it's up to you guys how you want to proceed.
So I have given them the budget highlights that I received yesterday from Scott. And you'll notice on them, um, and recommendation just from what I've seen in the reports and the budgets, um, that we should at least maintain our current mill levy. And not only for the county, but for the Salyways as well, the sewer district. Over the last few years or five years, we have decreased our mill levy fifteen point two seven mils. Which has decreased things about nine million one hundred eighty-two thousand six hundred fifty-nine dollars. Which is great, but the more money we give up and we keep raising things. So it's not gonna work very long, um, doing it that way. Keeping it as the current mill levy would give us, just because the assessed value going up would give us an extra four hundred ninety thousand one fifty-six. Which would bring our, um, mill to the two eleven five eighty-four that you're seeing on page, it's marked on page seven there on the right hand lower corner. Um, and that would keep the mill levy at forty-five point seven one five. Um, that would be considered exceeding R and R for the fact that our assessed valuation has increased.
Yeah, as, as you all know, appraisals go up, appraisers, appraisals go up every year seems like. And so the rate, even if you keep it the same, would be resulting in more revenue. And so to, if you stay revenue neutral, your rate's gonna go down every year, which you guys have elected to do as a policy matter. Or the, the board has elected to do. And so it's really just a policy decision. Um, as to how much money you need and what rate, uh, you need to set to meet that. And if it's more than the revenue from last year, then, or the revenue neutral rate, then then you'll have to do it here and give notice. Right next, right.
Which I'm prepared to move on this currently. Uh, I think that we need to, to, uh, exceed or at least provide intent to exceed based on the documentation that's got funded and provided us. When we lower the mill levy and then we raise expenditures, that puts us in a bad position. Um, and as Josh stated, it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to exceed the revenue neutral, but we need to have that capability as we go through this budget cycle, uh, for this increase in spending. Cause we all know, Ron Bridges down. Uh, they only have about enough budget for eight miles of blacktop when it's previously about fourteen, I believe. Um, and we all wanna cut taxes, but at the same time, we are charged with providing ways to, uh, provide services to the county. So, but it's my intent to move, to approve the intent to exceed at the revenue neutral rate. That's my two cents.
Some of the other expenses that are gonna play into this, um, we would be losing, if we drop it, we would definitely be losing the four hundred ninety thousand. You have to remember that we voted to have the three hundred thousand, which was actually over for increases from the beginning of the year across the board, excuse me. Um, we also have a little bit more expenses in our IT. Um, we have the elevator that needs to be fixed, which we had talked about coming out of federal land entitlement, but that will take a dent out of that. Um, we were kind of discussing that it could take about two years if you don't touch it to replenish that money that's in there. That we would take out for the elevator. Um, K Camp is having a average of fifteen percent increase, um, in their contributions for twenty twenty-six. So that's gonna be around two hundred eighty-nine thousand. It's gonna take us to three hundred thirty-two thousand. Um, KPNF would also increase, um, I gave that document back to Chris there, but I wanna say it was around a hundred twenty-six thousand, um, increase. But that was for twenty-four budget, which the raises weren't implemented at that time. So there could be some variances at that as well. And that's just a few things that I have grabbed right off the top of my head.
Um, for me, I would prefer to stay at the revenue neutral rate. If we stay at the current mill levy, we would go from collecting nine point one million to nine point six million. So if we stay at the current mill levy, we'll increase taxes by four hundred ninety thousand. So I would prefer not to elect to have the meeting to possibly raise it. If we stay at the revenue neutral rate, then we'll just collect the same as last year. So we're not lowering taxes, but we're not raising taxes. We would collect the nine point one million again.
Well, with that being said, Heather, you know, we've all disagreed on this topic, but, um, I just wanna really set to the tone that when we do not increase our tax levy, the same that the cost of living and cost of goods and services increase, then we're spending our reserves. And at some point in time, we will have depleted those reserves and we're not gonna get anybody's skin to them. Um, I don't wanna increase taxes on anyone, but the sad reality of life is we have to have dollars to provide services. When we ex, when we remain revenue neutral, nothing stays the same from year to year. If we collect the same dollars this year that we collected last year and then everything goes up, then we have to find that money somewhere and that money comes out of our, our coffers. It comes out of the reserves. And when we do that for too long, then you don't have any reserves left. Uh, I think we can exceed the revenue neutral rate or we can motion to intend to exceed and still be fiscally responsible with our dollars and make sure that we're only taking in what we need to spend. So with that being said, I will move to provide notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate.
And part of that motion is, is, I don't know if there's a second, but before the, before you that, part of that motion will need to set up something with a rate not to exceed.
Uh, forty-five seventy-one, is that correct, Michelle?
Um, forty-five point seven one five.
So notice of intent to exceed revenue neutral rate, uh, not to, would it be not to exceed the forty-five seven point one five?
Right, the highest, the highest mill levy that you'll consider at the hearing would be the, that number. Because it does exceed revenue neutral, but you have to provide the rate that you're gonna, the top rate you're gonna consider.
Correct. So that's part of the motion, the date I just stated.
So this motion, this has to be done before, uh, next Friday?
That's right, the eighteenth.
When would the, when is the hearing? When would the hearing be held?
You'll set, if, if there is a, a second and it passes this motion, the next thing would be to determine what date you're going to hold the hearing. And there's a form that I think the state has provided that we can fill out next week, um, if you're comfortable with that.
I also have that form ready to go as well.
So the form, form would set a hearing. And since, I'll say, County hasn't done it. Well, I don't know. Have you exceeded, do you know if you've exceeded revenue neutral since, since the passage of the law several years ago?
We haven't.
I don't believe so.
So, yeah, it'll be the first time you did that. And, um, and so you need to set time for your revenue neutral hearing where the public can come in and, and give comments. And so that would need to be between August twentieth and September twentieth. So I'd suggest taking one of your, um, Tuesday morning meetings at nine thirty. Or nine o'clock, one or two, uh, to publish as the meeting. But I think you can take that up. At, it, it, after you, the, unless the motion is fine as it is, we can take up hearing date if it passes.
I mean, we will still have budget discussion next week. Is that correct on Tuesday?
Um, as far as I know, just as long as we can get some of these holes filled in and stuff like that. Uh, Scott and I had reviewed some of our schedules and we were looking if you guys go this route for September sixteenth and doing a five-thirty meeting. And that would conclude the revenue neutral hearing as well as the budget hearing. And then just to be clear, the motion that's on the table right now is just for the Osage County budget. Uh, the sewer district would be separate from that.
I think I'm going on the sixteenth.
Do we?
I'm suggesting pick a day that you all three can be there.
Yes.
For what you're gonna have here.
Do we need to, I just, it's not, with this, I don't have the complete information on the budget stuff. Is next week too late to pass a motion to, with intent to exceed? Do we have to do it this week, I guess is what I'm saying?
Not legally. You do have one more week. Cause you have to provide notice by the twentieth pursuant to statute. And since that falls on Sunday, close of business Friday is when the governor of, um, the governor of the state this year is.
Well, bear in mind, just because if we do pass notice to intend to exceed, it does not mean that you're going to exceed.
Sure, sure.
Just gives us the levers to fully consider our budget because if we're gonna remain revenue neutral, there's really no, no need to even talk about the budget. Cause it's gonna be what dollars, uh, depict. Because it's going to be what dollars depict. And what we take, it's going to be pretty well set. So if you exceed, and then we go through the budget, and we find out that we don't need more than the existing mill levy, then we approve the existing mill levy. If we look to exceed, and we do find that we need more dollars, then we have the levers to do that.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the idea that we need to, to exceed. I'm just, you know, I guess I'm just frustrated that it's being put before us, and I don't have the full information, so. But I can, I will second that motion as long as we're still going through the budget process and, and looking things over. Okay, so I'll second that.
Has the motion been made and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so Michelle, you will lead to, what date did you say you want to set the hearing? You have to publish for fourteen days, correct?
Uh, ten days. Ten days.
For the hearing, so from here, Michelle, in the clerk's office, will prepare the notices of revenue neutral rate hearings pursuant to this statute. That will include all of the different taxing districts for each individual taxpayer. And it will have the hearing date. So then those notices go out after July twentieth to all taxpayers. So I would suggest now, if you can, with your calendars, picking a date. Heather said that she can't be there on that, that evening, five-thirty, meeting on September sixteen. But you've got to do it sometime between August twentieth and then September twentieth.
Okay. So we can approve that stuff next week?
Well, I guess I would preliminarily, you can always amend it next week, but I wouldn't want to forget to do it. So I, I would suggest going ahead and setting your hearing today just for purposes of giving notice to the clerk. And then if you need to amend that before July twentieth, you can.
So what date do we want to set it at, Michelle? September sixteenth, September sixteenth?
That was my goal. Heather said she's not available.
I'm out. Can we just do it, can we do it the week, the regular meeting on Tuesday the night, the week before?
And he is booked that day. Scott is.
I can make that happen the week before the sixteenth.
Scott's not available that day.
So is he available the second of September? Isn't that giving you enough time?
I believe so. I just was trying to allow enough time that we really could review budgets, making sure that it was where we wanted it.
What about, say, the evening of the fifteenth, or even the evening of the eleventh and ninth? Heather, would you be available for any of those, so you can have Scott as well?
Probably not the eleventh or twelfth.
Or even the evening of the, oh, you're not available evening sixteen too?
What about switching the ninth to an evening, is Scott available then?
He's not available the whole day of the ninth.
Okay.
What's the latest, what's the latest date? It goes, you said sixteen.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
What about the fifteenth?
I think either the evening of the fifteenth.
Do I have to physically be here?
Um, you could be by phone or by Zoom.
We would, we would, if we did it on an evening, would we just be doing that item?
Yeah, I mean, that would be my preference.
We're, we would just be voting on the revenue neutral rate?
No.
Right.
We would.
But you'd also be hearing from the public.
Oh, okay.
We would be adopting the budget and everything too along with that. Because there'd be the revenue neutral rate hearing and the budget hearing.
And I, I guess I would say, you know, you can do it however you want, but in my experience with revenue neutral hearings, there, there's a, a lot of the public is very interested in that, because it's, it's their tax rates. So in terms of discussing the actual commissioner rationale and approach to the budget, I guess it's a little bit more of a significant hearing when it comes to explaining to the public the approach of any one commissioner or the commissioner board as a whole. So I, again, you can do whatever you want, but if possible, finding of time when you all three can be there, it probably would be best.
I'm fine with the fifteenth, and I might be here, I just don't know. So if I can do it by phone, if I can't, but.
We can set you up a Zoom if I as well next week. That would be fine with me.
So the fifteenth, five-thirty?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I, I would just accept a motion.
Does that work for you?
Would it be here, five-thirty, here at the courthouse? Would you anticipate more people than would fit in this room, or is this room okay?
I'm sorry, I still didn't hear that.
Yeah, I, I think it can be that room.
Okay.
Sometimes people will live in a bigger spot to accommodate. But you never know, it, it's a big, it's a pretty big room. And just if, if you want people to come, you may want to come up with some sort of sign up and, and, you know, allocate a certain amount of time to each speaker.
I didn't know if we needed to cite a venue at this time, or just the intent to have a meeting.
Yeah, I, if you're. Again, you can change it next week, but after the nineteenth of July, you can't. I'm sorry, the eighteenth. You've got to set your venue and your time and your notice of intent and the, and the maximum mill, mill levy all at the same time before July twentieth.
Okay.
And so if you want to preliminarily decide today, by default, it's going to be in the commissioner room, then if you guys decide to look at other venues this week, you can always amend that next, next meeting.
Okay.
Well, and Chris said that the sheriff's office would also be available if needed. The EOC. And it probably has.
Scott has the notice of hearing just held at the Osage County Courthouse address in London. So that would lead to.
The fifteenth works for me, so, on that question.
Fifteenth at five-thirty in the Osage County Commissioner's Boardroom?
Yeah. So far.
Was that a barrier?
So moved.
I'll second that. Motion's been made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses? Motion carries. Okay, I got to get back to work there, bring in my phone.
So are.
On the resolution numbers for the KPNF? Do we have those?
Yes, I do have those. As far as the.
What, what are they, twenty twenty-five, what?
Fifteen and sixteen.
Okay, so I have to miss in.
Nope, sorry, sixteen and seventeen, I'm sorry.
So I guess what I would say is, if, if everyone's seen it, the motion would be to the affiliation for transfer capers to KPNF, which is page thirteen of the packet, would be marked twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, is that right? One five?
Uh, sixteen.
One six.
Okay, sixteen, twenty twenty-five, sixteen. And then you would pass the, pass that resolution, which is being resolved at the Osage County Court, County Commissioners by the Commissioners that the Osage County Sheriff's Office, a participating employer with the Kansas Public Employees Retirement System, hereby makes application in accordance with the name statute to become a participating employer in Kansas Police and Fireman's Retirement System to provide for inclusion of police officers and, uh, uh, police officers only and not by franchise effective January first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Poses? Motion carries.
The second motion would be twenty, to style the affiliation for optional group life insurance resolution twenty twenty-six dash one seven, and that it be resolved with the Osage County Board of Commissioners by the Commissioners that the Osage County Sheriff's Office, a participating employer in, or, or an applicant to become a participating employer in the Kansas Police and Fireman's Retirement System, hereby makes application in accordance with the name statute for the inclusion of all of its eligible employees in optional life insurance under the capers system effective January first, twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses? Motion carries. Okay.
And then on, on the saleaway, vote to exceed, keeping it seventy-three point one one two? The saleaway Osage Sewer District number one? Vote to exceed, keeping the same mill levy of seventy-three point one one two?
Is there a motion?
No, I, I, if, if you want to make that motion, the motion would be, what's the mill levy again?
Uh, seventy-three point one one two.
Seventy-three point one one two. So the motion would be that we, the, the Board of County Commissioners provide notice, has, the city has the Board of Governors for Sewer District number one, saleaway, provide notice of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate to a rate not to exceed. And again, can you tell me?
Seventy-three point one one two?
Seventy-three point one one two. So we'll take it, take it there. That, that's our question.
Still moved.
Second, I mean, yeah.
So, the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poses? Motion carries.
And the last motion would be to set the hearing date for Sewer District number one, saleaway, to be September fifteenth at five-thirty PM at the Osage County Courthouse Board of County Commissioner's Room.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Poses? Motion carries. Okay. Anything else?
All right, I think that's the pertinent stuff.
Okay, we'll take you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I'm still here, you all need to hang out for a meeting?
Um, I think all we have left, Ryan hasn't came up, but all we have left is bills, meeting minutes, and payroll change.
So these are what you signed for the notice of hearings?
Might ask him about that transient tax if he's.
Oh, are you still there, Josh?
I am, yes.
Yes, Colleen had a couple, the transient tax.
Yeah, I'm going to call her right after this.
Yeah, there's a pretty close deadline for that to get completed, so that way it would be for quarter four.
Okay.
And then the, there was a review for Safe Streets for all that had been awarded in greenlit. So then there was a review of a document. But those two items were pretty time sensitive for her.
Okay, I'll call her and knock those out today. And then on meeting minutes for today, Michelle, I can type up the motions that I was part of just to record it.
Okay.
I could probably get to pass those, approve those minutes from today's meeting next week.
Yeah.
If you get those prepped, just since it's a pretty significant motion.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think that's everything for now.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks. Okay, so let's go through, we'll do these two. You said you need us to sign these?
Yes.
Okay. And then what you, well, do we need all three? Or we use, use a stamp for?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. What is today, seven eight?
Yeah.
There's these two now.
Are these from?
Those are from.
Sheriff?
Sheriff's office.
One of each? Yeah. You don't have any further recommendations on those two, do you? On those two? Okay?
So I would move to approve status payroll change on seven three for Emily Hamm, a resignation effective seven three, and a hiring of Mia Escalante effective seven twenty-two for Sheriff's Department.
You, that was your motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Air conditioner work good in the new building?
Thank you. Well, actually, it's almost at the same line.
I said air conditioner work in the new building, everything going good so far? Well, you got to find them, yeah.
Yeah, we're finding them. Do you want to?
Do, uh, are you using the PBC shoe or?
We already did that, so. Yes, however, would you want us, I wasn't here July first, so I can't help approve these minutes.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, I forgot to ask you about that earlier, from the last PBC meeting.
So do we have to go into a PBC meeting to approve the PBC meeting minutes?
I don't know.
We've never had before.
Because for him, I mean, if we do it in a commission meeting, you're a PBC member.
Right.
I don't either. I guess you can stall them out till next week on the PBC minutes. The whole PBC thing's foggy to me anyway, I don't know, it's weird.
Well, I would say we either hold it till next week, or my recommendation be to, just out of, uh, a balance of caution, we would have to go into PBC.
Yeah.
And prove it, and then come back out. So are you, you okay to just wait till next week?
I can wait, yeah.
Can we just wait till next week, just to make sure that we don't do something incorrectly?
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, so we're down to Ryan Fine.
Yeah.
Before he's coming.
Uh-huh.
And then, meeting minutes for last week.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, same thing, I wasn't here. I think we're just gonna have to move those to next week.
Okay, that's fine. I meant that, I'm sorry Heather, I meant to ask you about that while we had Les on the phone, but that's.
Well, actually, I was thinking it before he got off the phone, and I was like, oh, we should do the meeting minutes while he's on here, and I.
I was gonna say it earlier, but you're, you know, we're moving through stuff, so I gave up on it, I was like, I'll talk to, I'll, I'll say something later, but I forgot.
So. Yeah, Michelle, on both the meeting minutes, if we'll just, we'll move them to next week. Yeah, 'cause I wasn't here last week, so I don't. I, um.
And it's Brandon's fault for not bringing it up earlier.
So, we'll move those to next week. So, lastly. Put this over here. Okay, put this back. All right, bills, bills, okay, so. Okay, the payroll sheet, she's gonna need a signature on this, in here. You want this on the back, on the payroll sheet that you have in the book? So she'll probably have to stamp Les' on there, or if he's coming in to sign it. And that goes in there, okay, then I gotta look at these.
Ryan wasn't coming in to talk about that bid, was he?
He was supposed to, yeah.
Oh, really? I thought that's what you said earlier, but I'm getting old, I can't remember anything. And whenever you get done with that, I have one question on the bills, Michelle.
You want, is there something here you want to look at?
I don't know, I just, I don't know what it is.
What's the name of the vendor?
Uh, QRC Business Consulting. County Wage Survey, what, what is that, and how, how?
I think it's Quentin Roberts out of OSH City that does, that helped with something.
That had to do with, um, some of the entities like Orbis and businesses.
Okay.
I did ask Colleen about that.
Okay, wage survey within the county, not, not county employees. Cause I was like, well, where's that survey identified?
Yeah, yeah, if it's, if it's.
Okay.
I know when they were putting together.
Yeah, I'm, I'm vaguely familiar, I've heard Colleen reference that before, so, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, and there's two, seven-two and seven-four.
I just thought to my little simple brain, I was like, well, if we got a survey for employees, I wanna see it. Thank you. Heather, if you have some more looking to do, I'm gonna excuse myself.
Oh, sure, yep, yeah, I'll just take a little bit.
I'll be right back.
Yes.
Yes. Is this, is that Michelle Rooks, or who's that signature?
Yeah.
Well, that says GPT, is that just the wrong? It says VIN number five-two-seven, yeah, there's one from Fran.
That's GPT.
Yeah, and then the one that's seven-seven-one-nine-four says GPT, but that's the one that Michelle signed. And it does have a different account, uh, general ledger account? I mean, it does match. There's that, so that's GPT, which is Fran's. Then there's another one that says GPT, but that's signed by Michelle. Is this like her, the appraiser vehicle?
Yes. But it's in the right fund, in the right amount, to just, oh.
Just to.
It's your description, yeah.
Any luck with Ryan?
I'll check. Was this recent, the? Perfect. Yes, that makes sense why I don't remember. Because I wasn't here, I'm like. Like, wait a minute.
I don't remember yet.
Yeah, okay, the only thing I saw was. On the, um, the budget workshops, I didn't see these anywhere in here.
Um, they are under.
And I didn't.
Office.
They're in the K's here, but I didn't see them in the K's here.
Office of Accounts, the Os.
So, we already did payroll, you've signed it, that one either, I don't know if you want, if you use his stamp, or he'll be signing that, but. And then, okay. I would move to approve the bills for July eighth, twenty twenty-five, in the amount of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes.
She didn't have to look at little highlight notes for you, honey.
Oh, well, it was just two documents, so hopefully I'm smart enough to figure that out. When she has multiples, she tags them, which is helpful when there's multiples.
I thought we could join in and pick on Les, since he's not here to defend himself.
Okay, so there's that. All right, so. I think that's everything, Josh is gonna contact Colleen. We've been, and you, you asked if Ryan was coming, and I missed your answer.
Um, he's answering here. Um, if you look on the back page, you'll see his recommendation, and if you are given that, um, you can go ahead and make the motion to accept his recommendation.
I'm going to, I'm fine with what you guys, I mean, you got the discussion last week, so I'm gonna let you, if you wanna look at those and make the motions. Oh, you have it, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I've got, yeah.
Okay. I wasn't here for the discussion, but if you wanna make the motion.
Sure.
On whichever one, he was, I don't know which one he's.
I assume the circle means go on that one?
On the betis, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, so. I'm, I move, uh, that we accept the bid for twenty twenty-five asphalt, from Bid Asphalt Construction. Let's see, the bid total, do I need to state that as well?
Yes.
Nine hundred and.
Well, he has a different number to the side. So I didn't know.
I'd say the total, I'd go for the total bid, correct?
Yeah, I see, yeah, I see it now.
Nine hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents.
So moved, or did you make a motion?
Motion.
Okay, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes. Okay, so that's that.
Do you want signatures on that, Michelle, at all, or?
Just putting out the bottom.
Heather's signature enough on that, is, is chair today?
And it's betis?
Yeah.
There's that, if you want that, did you, did you need his, the other signatures?
Nah. Then we can all blame you.
Okay. Let's see, anybody else?
Is my phone blowing up?
Yeah, I can hear it, okay. Okay, so bills, meeting minutes, we move to next week.
Yeah.
I think that's everything. So I would move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.